I'm glad and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, March 6th at the community center right here. This is a reminder to please turn off your cell phones if you haven't already done so. Is my mic working?
Yes.
Okay. The consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Someone second it.
Remove and second it. Any discussion?
Yes. I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask. On the, on the treasurer's report, there were two accounts that I was looking at that were too budgeted very high. I think I know one of them, the general funds was running like thirty-seven thousand against eighteen thousand, and I believe that's because of the new marketing plan.
Correct.
The new marketing company.
Yes, sir.
The other one was Omar, five-one-five-four-eight-one-oh, special events. That's a nineteen thousand versus a budget of eighty-seven hundred. And that looked a little out of whack. How is this going to work?
Yeah, so I did some research on that account. Looks like this year we spent twelve thousand dollars in Christmas decor, Christmas lights and Christmas. That was not spent last year. So that's the difference that we're finding is that twelve grand that was spent on Christmas lights in that line item.
Questions outside?
Yes, down the Boulevard and at the district office. I think Mike had helped with that.
Excuse me? That was all new stuff?
Yes.
What happened to the old stuff?
Well, in the past, we subbed all that out. We had a company come in and put our lights up. Over the last couple of years, we decided to try to do everything in-house. And because we didn't have any, any lights, because when the vendor would come in, they'd bring their own lights. But we had it. We didn't have anything. So we decided, decided, I think the budget was like ten thousand dollars for lighting. So what we've been doing the last couple of years is buying, buying so much every year, put them up, and we store everything back. So now we, now, years down the road, we won't have that cost. We have it now because we have nothing. But right now, we take everything down when we're all done, store it in the maintenance area. And so we'll be able to use it year after year. And just for a side note, we had a lot, a lot of compliments of the lightings getting back to where it used to be. Because they used to do it in-house, and then they stopped for years. And so we got a lot of feedback that people were really happy the way the Boulevard was lit up for Christmas.
So we just didn't plan it?
True. Yes, I guess.
But did we have a savings on the other side? Or did we just not budget for this and just planned to do it without a budget?
I, what do you mean, a savings on the other side?
Well, because you said we used to hire it out.
Right, right, right. It was ten thousand dollars every time they did it.
And did we budget for that and not put it in? In other words, do we have a savings on that?
What we did is we took the ten thousand dollars that, that we would have used from the year before. So, so, so he said, all right, uh, two years ago, okay? We spent ten thousand dollars. So then we stopped using the vendors. So the following year, we buy ten thousand dollars worth of lights. This year, we buy ten thousand dollars worth. So, so right now, we should be in really good shape with it. So yes, well, there's going to be a savings from here, here for the next five or six years because we won't have that, that cost that we have.
No, I'm just saying, if we planned for the expenditure this year but didn't budget for it, that's not good. But did we budget for the outside service that we didn't use? So did we have a savings in that that offsets the expense that we had in the lights?
Correct. So we had in the thirty-three-five total budget for that special events, ten thousand was acclimated for the Christmas lights. So we just offset, instead of going outside, we decided to start buying them internally. And that way, we could eventually move away from that expense. But it was budgeted for inside the special events.
So we spent ten thousand on lights?
We spent twelve, I think just over, a little bit over twelve thousand.
And then how much did we spend on labor to put them up?
I'm not sure how many man hours.
It's about, it takes us about a week, a week for two guys to put up and take down.
So we didn't budget enough?
Well, we didn't budget the labor because we have the labor already here, so.
Okay, I just wanted to know, so we obviously blew it. That's fine.
Well, it's not that we blew it. We actually tried to improve it for years down the road.
Oh, that's great.
You know? And the other problem we were having is having a vendor, they were from, I don't know, from Tampa. So if we had lights go out, we had to wait two or three days, and we had, you know, we had half the Boulevard lit up. So, I mean.
Okay. Yeah, I think the point that we're trying to make is that if you know that the plan is changing but don't change the budget, we don't know the plan is changing. So we can't look at it, and then the budget looks like we didn't do our job.
Right, okay.
So in the, in the future, if you know the plan is changing, change the budget to go with the plan.
Well, we should be in pretty good shape for the, for the next, you know, down the few years.
On a side note, we got into budgets. The way we decorated the interior of the clubhouse was phenomenal this year. I'd like to see us budget maybe more than one dollar for next year so we could do it properly. I guess that goes to Mike. Where's Mike? In the budget for next year, I expect to see something for the inside of the clubhouse because we did nothing this year. That was not very.
Yeah, that's fine.
You know, felt not very friendly.
And we actually talked about that, you know, with the, you know, with the, you know, with the clubhouse being our brand-new inside and stuff, you know? And we have actually talked about that, so. It'll be better next year.
Yeah, nothing, it was just like a normal, who cares? The outside was pretty, I guess, but inside was not. All right, that's enough on that. I got one other thing on the golf financials. Michael? Uh, the operating income of the restaurant is discouraging. It dropped in December, according to this. We lost twenty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And that was against the loss of twenty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-six the year before. So we actually lost almost twenty thousand dollars more than the previous year with our new kitchen and everything. When you look at it further, what really concerned me was your, if you had this report, you go to page eight. Your sales in your food was down eleven thousand dollars in December. And that, that concerns me a great deal in December. I don't know why we would have a loss in food. If I remember then, if you go further, you can see it was five thousand dollars in banquet sales approximately that we dropped, and possibly five thousand dollars in à la carte sales that we dropped in the month of December. I would think December should be one of our better months in making money. And based on this and the fact that you sent down an email to us that said you're estimating that we're going to lose two, almost two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars this year versus a plan of two-hundred-and-twenty-two, I think we've got some serious wood flags that we need to discuss, talk about, stuff like that.
Sure. I, you know, I actually planned for some of these questions, so, and I spoke with Tanny yesterday about the December financials with food and beverage revenue. And the one thing that, that doesn't jump out at you right off the bat is, you know, obviously December is a huge month for us on the banquet side with Christmas parties. We do tons of Christmas parties year over year. If you look at a calendar of twenty-eighteen December and a calendar of twenty-nineteen December, what you'll notice is, is in twenty-eighteen in December, we had four Saturdays before Christmas. Now, that doesn't seem like a big deal, but in twenty-nineteen, we had three Saturdays before Christmas. And that also counts for Fridays, too. So three Fridays and three Saturdays. So what that does is that we actually lost two of our biggest nights for selling Christmas parties, which would be Friday nights and Saturday nights. So we actually overcame, it sounds, I mean.
No, I was in retailing for thirty-five years. You could tell Mike watched that, and my business wasn't that good. He told me I was pulling a you-know-what. So I'm getting.
So, well, we actually, so we had to accommodate for that. So we had to convince a couple of events to move to Sundays, which they're reluctant. I mean, they're driving the bus. They're going to, you know, they're going to have a Friday if they want to have a Friday. But if you don't have a Friday to sell, you have nothing to sell. And also on the, to note, on the à la carte side, you, it's funny that you wouldn't think that weather affects our restaurant business, but it does, just because of the fact when we have a rainy Saturday, and I know some of you guys play on Saturdays, so you know what I'm talking about. But if we have a, of all-day rain on a Saturday, with Saturday couples gets rained out and they don't come in, you're looking at a two to three, maybe even a four-thousand-dollar loss in revenue for the day as far as the à la carte business goes. And we had that in December. Now, as far as my recollection goes, we didn't have that in prior year. So there are a few things that have reflected in that as far as us being behind prior year.
Michael, you're not responsible. I don't need you to throw all this crap and defend yourself. It's not, you had nothing to do with this. I understand that. All I want to know is, are we in trouble? And if we are, what are we going to do about it?
Sure. And I know when you look at the financials and you can, and I have a, I had it laid out to explain a little bit later in my report, but we can go through some things now. Yes, the, the EBITDA number being behind planned should be alarming. However, if you look at my forecast from the last week, you'll see that that number is, is trending better. And I think there's a few things kind of coming up that'll actually make it even, even closer to plan. So there was, obviously, we had some unbudgeted things that occurred in October and November with the, with the renovation. And I, and I have a file compiled of that, and I'm working on being able to present that to you. Obviously, we, revenues are down slightly, and it doesn't help. And I also think on the golf course maintenance side, I noticed some prepaid items, like, I'm not sure what it is, but for example, it was like fertilizer. So they buy fertilizer in bulk, and, you know, the fertilizer may be budgeted throughout the year. And when that invoice came in, it got paid in full, I believe in November, instead of being appropriated to the proper months where it's budgeted. So we will actually recover some of that cost as we get to those months where it was actually budgeted. Also to note, a membership is, is up, which was part of my report. So in January, there's an extra, there's another thirty to thirty-four thousand dollars that's going to go right to that EBITDA number because there's no cost of goods associated with that.
Hey, if you make a month, I'll probably feel better. You're saying you're going to improve.
So, so if you look at my weekly report, which you'll get now, you've gotten two, you know, at the bottom of that, you're going to see my yearly forecast. Now, I spent all of last week, you know, because I just started that report, the forecasting, and I went through the whole year and tried to get to, you know, and when I say forecasting, forecasting for, for this is, in my opinion, and I don't mean it to be laughable, but it's kind of like forecasting a hurricane. So you have a forecast track of a hurricane, you have the middle line, and then you have the cone of uncertainty. So that forecast, when I'm doing my forecasting, I'm not, I'm not trying to show you all roses and give you my best-case scenario. That's not what that is. That, that is actually a fairly, in my opinion, conservative guess to where we are right now. That doesn't mean that's where we're going to finish. I think if we have a great season and a great summer, I think we'll, we'll be back to plan. I think if we have an, if we have an average, you know, season and end of summer, you know, I think we're going to be really close to that number. And if we get hit with two hurricanes this summer, I think it's going to be worse. But I'm giving you, I'm giving you my best guess to where we are, and that number's going to change weekly. Every, every day I forecast, that number will change.
I'm giving you my best guess. If we end up at two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, we're in big trouble going forward with the restaurant operation as we have it today.
The forecast that you say is going to improve, is that related to the two price increases that you submitted since the, since you got back open in November? You changed the menu twice, you've increased the menu twice, or the price twice. Now, is, is your forecast improved sales or your revenues gone up because you increased the price of the product?
So if you go through the financials on the page where it says profit center contribution, it's got the F and B sales, COGS, and COGS percentages. If you look at the COGS percentage, it's at, for, for the month-to-date of December, it was at thirty-seven-point-two percent, and the budgeted is thirty-six-point-two percent. So we're off by one percent. And if you look at year-to-date, it's off by point-six percent. Those, those are what are steering us as far as menu costing. So when we have price increases, it's not on every item, but we, we go through and run reports to which items are meeting our cost-of-good standards and the items that are, you know, because obviously, our cost increases all the time for our cost of goods that we sell. You know, the price of meat goes up, the price of chicken goes up, the price of everything goes up. So when, when, when we get out of our, our budget line as far as cost of goods sold, I mean, we have to make price increases. And there's other areas where this, you know, may need to happen over time as well. So periodically, prices will have to change in order for us to stay in line, especially if we want to improve the bottom line as far as a restaurant's concerned.
But to clarify then, to answer his question, you're, you're saying that you do take in your forecast, you take into the price increases as well as the cost of goods increases?
That is, that is correct. So, you know, we're trying to, when we forecast, yes. So the answer is obviously, yes, we are taking that into consideration with our, we use a lot of KPIs, key, key performance indicators when we're, when we're trying to forecast. Now, the, I'm not looking at my cost of goods when I'm necessarily forecasting those numbers. I'm trying to keep those in line with budget. What I look at when I'm forecasting is, say, our, our average cover. So every time that somebody comes into the restaurant, how much money are they spending when they buy their dinner? Okay? And I'm trying, you know, so I'm going to use that, and then I'm going to determine how many people I'm expecting to come in. And then I'm going to figure out how much money people are going to spend as they come in. Now, I know at some point along, I don't know if it's when we went from our old-style menu to our newer-style menu where we offer lunch and dinner all day, but the KPI of average cover price is actually down year over year. So what you don't see is that the restaurant is busier than ever, we're working harder than ever, and we're actually getting less dollar per person than we have over the past couple of years. So that will equate to why labor percentage as a cost is a little bit high, because we need more people to serve more people, and we're getting less dollar per person than we have. So there's two reasons why you're starting to see some cost increase on the menu.
You do realize that your payroll and benefits exceeded your gross margin?
That is correct.
You'll be out of business soon.
That is why.
When your payroll and benefits exceed your gross margin dollars available, which is sales less your cost of goods sold, and your payroll and benefits are higher, you should wake up champs.
No, I understand. That's why you're seeing the adjustments on the menu pricing, and you're also seeing, and I know you don't see it on a day-to-day, but we are making adjustments as far as the labor side of things go. Obviously, you remember the November financials, the labor in the restaurant was way out of whack, which we had a lot of, we had some overtime, we had a lot of training. December, labor was still a little bit high. Early December, we were still seeing, I would say, a little excess overtime. I think as of, you know, the end of December and going into January, I think you're going to start to see the labor numbers more on track as far as budget goes. So I'm really looking forward to seeing those numbers, and I think you're going to see an improvement on that.
Just shooting up the cup. Again, knowing that you stepped into this, I understand that. But with what it looks like is going to happen, I think it would be very proper to call for a meeting with the cash management, since we haven't had one in a couple of years, and get their input as to what they think's going on. I mean, you have a new boss who, I don't think any, have we met him? Anybody? Maybe didn't I?
Just hi. That's all I do.
Yeah.
Maybe we should have a meeting and discuss it out.
Sure, and, and we can do that. And I, that's, when Brian first came on board, this was the first thing that we looked at was, was the restaurant numbers. And we had a full-day, long discussion going through stuff, looking at our expenses, looking at our labor, looking at our revenue, looking at all our KPIs. And those are, so we're, we have already started to build that plan. We've already started to put that plan into, into motion.
What plan is it?
So.
What are you going, I mean, I'm not.
No, you're fine, right? So.
What plan are you going to put into motion? We don't know about it.
So we need to control our costs, and we need to increase our revenue. It sounds pretty simple, but, I mean, that's what it is.
Okay. Not, not to beat the dead horse, but to clarify on your forecasting, how much future do you calculate into your current forecast? So in other words, you're forecasting we're going to lose two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand right now, but you're telling us that we're going to improve because in January, we're going to have all that income from the increase in memberships?
Right.
Is that increase in memberships calculated into your two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand forecast?
Not yet. That, that increase has not hit that forecast yet, so there's.
This increase in membership has nothing to do with the restaurant?
No, but it has to do, that, when you're looking at the, the EBITDA number and the forecast that he's referring to is the whole operation. That's not just restaurant. That's the entire operation as far as, as it is to plan as an entire operation. The answer is, is I went through and I tried to forecast all the way through September. And obviously, so the membership numbers are, have exceeded plan already, and I believe it was over-planned by fifty-four, fifty-five thousand dollars when I did the last forecast. And, and those numbers, they don't just go right in. They are appropriated out monthly. So, you know, five-month memberships go to certain months, three-month memberships go to certain months, and annual memberships get broken down throughout the whole year. So the membership dollar hits on a monthly basis. So when these numbers come in, most of which are five- and three-month memberships, are going to directly affect January, February, March.
Okay, so just.
Those numbers have not hit that forecast yet, no. That will adjust.
So when you create your forecast, it's based on the numbers that have appeared in the reports, not the improvements that you know are coming down in the next two or three months?
A little bit of both, a little bit of both. So when I'm forecasting savings or, or things like that, that is in there. Again, again, it's conservative. I, I'm not slashing maintenance budget just to make the EBITDA number look good.
Yeah, I, I think what we're hoping for is a forecast that's not conservative nor aggressive.
Right.
Gives us a good handle of where we think we are.
Right.
And, and if, in fact, you know that we're going to have some improvement from the membership number.
Right.
That should be in the forecast so that we know that it's really not going to be two-hundred-and-eighty, maybe it's going to be two-hundred-and-sixty, and we've got a smaller nut that we need to close.
And I think that's what's about to happen. When you see my next report on the December financials, if you look at the EBITDA number, it's actually even more alarming. It's, it's about eighty-seven thousand dollars off plan as opposed to that last forecast, which was better than that, which was, what I said, fifty-seven. So the trend is going in that direction, and I, and I see that trend continuing. And now, again, there's a lot of unknowns in the world, but, I mean, we're, which is why I tend to say it's conservative. It's not crazy conservative. There is savings in there, and it's going to, I feel confident within, by time March financials come out, we'll have a really good outlook of how the rest of our year's going to plan out.
Do you have an actual action plan and what all those actions are going to do to increase, to increase that forecast?
I don't have anything on paper that I can hand you right now, but as far as official, this is what's going on. We've started some, some things as far as controlling costs and controlling labor, some actions to increase revenue. It's not jotted out and, and something I can put on your desk at this moment, but I can put that.
For instance?
I can put that together.
For improved revenue, what are those action plans besides the price increase?
Yeah, so, you know, when we have months that, that aren't very busy with, say, outside events, that's when you'll start to see us have more of our own events. There is sales action, so when I work with our, our new salesperson, if I see the calendars not full of, of what we need to make our budget, it's, okay, what's our sales plan? How are we going to fill these dates? Can you pull up last year's calendar? Who's, who's coming this year and who's not? If they're not, if, if they haven't made their choice of where they're coming this year, let's call them. Are they going somewhere else? Can we get them on the calendar? And we're not looking at next week when we're doing that. We're looking at, we're looking into April, you know, May, trying to figure out, you know, which events that are recurring events, because obviously weddings don't occur every year, but what events reoccur, and let's make sure they're coming here, you know? So we.
Your, your basic challenge, Mike, I mean, some of us go to the restaurant all the time. There's nobody's eating dinner there. You lost, we've lost the people, and they have not come back because we've opened up a new facility, for whatever reason. I can't, I mean, I'm disappointed they didn't come back. But you look at the people having dinner, comparing it to previous years, and the attendance, and I don't know if we ever do a head count, but it's got to be way down if people aren't eating here. So the challenge to you is how do I get those people to come in the door?
I, I agree that there's probably some people that we need to, to attack and bring back, but the, the numbers don't indicate that less people are eating there. In fact, we have more, and I can run some of those reports and show them to you.
You're dropping volume. How can it happen more, more, how can, how can that be true?
We've dropped in revenue. I don't think we've dropped.
你在销售上
In sales, yes.
Sales.
Dollars. In sales, dollars. But we've also had a decrease in APR.
If you're dropping in sales, people are eating less. People are eating less, I mean, there's probably less people eating.
Or there's more people playing less, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
There is.
We'll go, you, no, I want.
I have those. I'll show you.
I want you to succeed, but I'm.
I understand.
We're on the road to disaster. That's all I'm going to say?
Sure. I, I mean, I think we're on the road to recovery, and that's, and I, we do have a plan, and I do have reports. If you guys want to stop in my office and we can look at numbers, and I'll quietly take your opinions on where you want to go.
Okay, thank you. Any other board discussion? Any public comments? Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda that has been lost in consent. Chrissy?
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
President Hoteling?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the action agenda. The first item is resolution number twenty-twenty-dash-two-fourteen-oh-six, a resolution of the Sun and Lake of Lebrun Improvement District to approve a delayed payment agreement for connection fees with Magnolia Golf Villas LLC.
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Okay. Staff, I give direction here?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, we, we prepared this payment agreement. I guess the, whatever happened with the letter of credit, we decided to go this route. I spoke with Omar, and we've figured out the, what the actual costs are. And basically, what that is, is it's going to be a fifty percent is going to have to be paid upfront, but the other, other fifty percent will not be paid until either eighteen months pass or the permit for the eleventh villa is requested. And so that should put the district in a position where if we get the, I think the first half is thirty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty. And so that should put the district in a position where if we get the, I think the first half is thirty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty. Once we get that, that's going to cover the majority of our costs, so.
How many villas does he have yet as of now?
He asked four, four permits pulled.
I understand Mr. Hornick is here to speak to it?
We have four apartments for the water connection fee already. One of them is abandoned, and three are for the first private house that we're putting in. The, fully repurposed. We have forty-seven, four units go in. We're paying for fifty percent of them, and eleven of them will be around twenty-five percent. So this is all we need to be editing.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Hornick? Okay, thank you. Any other board comments? Any public comment?
Is that any port sales or are those seconds?
Your name, please. Your name, please.
Just curious, you know, permits are one thing, if you're on staff. I'm just curious to know if any folks go in and put their money down the movie.
We have a lot of activity, we have a lot of things coming through, we haven't sold anything yet. On the board has, it should be just one, or the one with the money out of it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We're a brilliant president of the Cholay Magnolia Place. We totally support the agreement and endeavors to build that golf house. We are cooperating with him to co-align the sun deck for entrance to Magnolia Place. It is, but he's doing an excellent job. I'm sitting very frankly, someone watching it all the time. He can't even get these things finished, and people are coming to tour and all that. They're tripping over his trees trying to get it done. He's done excellent job, the trees are beautiful, we have nothing but compliments for him. And all the citizens of Magnolia Place support the agreement.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Bring it back to the board. Let's call a question.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Harret?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Hotelling?
Yes.
Now, the next item is a discussion item on the code of conduct policy for users of district amendment. Someone from staff to brief us on this?
Based on the discussions from the last meeting, the board asked David to make a few revisions to a code of conduct policy. What is in front of you is another draft of that?
Yeah, so we basically went from the comments of the last time we discussed, it was like kind of scaled down. The original plan that we had come up with was based roughly on the employee, well, not roughly, almost exactly, on the employee code of conduct. And so we had, it was a little bit more draconian than I think the board wanted. And so we've kind of, kind of scaled it down a little bit to something that is, is more in line with what other clubs have done. Actually, this is, we got this one from another golf community and made some modifications to it, and so that's, that's what's up for discussion.
Any board discussion? Do you like it, do you not like it?
Yeah, all right, I'll go. We already had this conversation. I think one of the things in, in this new suggestion is, and I don't agree with this, I think we have two people delegating the punishment of any violation that we have. One would be representative from Casper from the golf course side, and then Tanya representing the district, the district side. I think one person or only one person is responsible. Casper works for the district, so therefore I think only Tanya should be the one who is totally responsible for this, take Casper out of the equation. That's number one. Number two is I still don't see any defined penalties. I want this to, this to be very simple. You screw up once, it's whatever we decide. Let's just hypothetically, you screw up once or you do something wrong. It's written, second time you do it, it's an automatic thirty-day suspension. Second, third time you do it, sixty days, if you do it after that, you're out of the club. Something like that. Give them the right to appeal to the board of supervisors if they don't like it. But it should be spelled out so that everybody knows when you violate one of our laws, this is what's going to happen. And we don't do that in this, in this latest attempt. So those are the two things I like to see taken into consideration.
Doesn't the, Tanya, doesn't the board of supervisors approve whatever, whether it's you or Mike? I mean, don't we approve whatever punishment you decide?
That has not happened in the past. I believe, since I've been here, I, I know of a, probably a six-month suspension, I think is the longest that a golf member has been suspended. I do know the board president was involved with Casper management and the general manager at the time. But the board has not typically been involved in, in those decisions as a, as a board.
Would the board be involved in an appeal process?
Well, the way that this is written right now is, is if there's any suspension or termination that comes before it, it's, it has to be approved by the board. That's the way this one is currently drafted, so.
Right, and I'm just saying, let's make it cut and dry. If they don't like what happens to them, then they can come to the board of supervisors and, you know, make their case. But I don't want to put any pressure on Tanya or whomever in, in trying to decide what the proper punishment is for, for violation. I think it should be spelled out so that everybody knows this is what happens.
But I think there needs to be classes of violations. So a verbal abuse would be different than a physical abuse. Or if somebody came in with a gun, we would suspend them not for thirty days, we would suspend them forever. So those are, those are the kind of things that gets more difficult, but not every violation is the same.
That's true. But that's not to say the punishment can't be the same. I mean, this, this, here's, here's the thing, this does not happen very often, maybe three times a year. If that, I don't even know how many times. But when it does happen, I just want us to be consistent in what we do. And we have not, that's all I'm looking for.
We can put a, we can put some language in there that says if, you know, if, if the severity of the violation, you know, we may, you can skip a step. You know, if we have step one, two, three, and four, you know, written warning, thirty days, sixty days, you know, we can put language in there that says the board is allowed to skip a step based on the severity.
I mean, that's what we decide, Mike.
Any other board discussion? Any public comment? Okay, I think you've got your orders on that discussion item. The next discussion item is updates to the district policy manual. And, Tanya?
Can we just go back for a word?
Okay.
So, what I recommended is what we're going to do with a little bit of enhancement from-
We're going to come back for, I think what we'll come back with is a, is a proposal for the board to, to vote on. At the next-
This will be, you'll come back with a resolution next time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. The, a discussion of the updates to the district policy manual.
Supervisors, I've provided a list of a few items in the district policy manual that may or may not need to be updated. A few of those were brought to my attention by Mr. Hotelling. And did you want me to go over those in detail, or you want to, you want to go over some of the, the points that you made?
Yeah, I, I brought it up to, to Tanya because I, I read the policy manual a year ago, and now that I've been on the board for a year, I read it again, and I said, okay, well, some of these things make sense and some of them need to be tweaked a little bit. And I guess going down the list, one of my questions was, I know we have a green committee that was set up to be outside of the reporting to the board, so therefore it's not impacted by the sunshine laws. And I asked if there were any other committees, and there aren't. The question was whether or not it was appropriate for the, the greens committee to be the way it is, or whether it should be a sunshine law issue. And, you know, I don't know if the board has any comment on that, but that was something that I thought needed to be at least looked at. On twelve oh one, what I noticed was there were, there were two items in the policy that called for action at the annual organizational meeting. And I'm not aware that we actually have an annual organizational meeting. And one of them was determining the schedule for meetings, and one of them was electing the officers, and we didn't do that at the same meeting. So I think we need to clean up that language and either eliminate the annual organizational meeting or set up an annual organizational meeting. The public comment, that was merely more of a suggestion that we add to the agenda as we have done, the actual language from the policy so that everybody's aware that there is a limit to the public comment. We're trying to silence anybody, but we want to keep control of the meeting. In twelve twelve, consideration to add, this was, the way it reads is all correspondence received by the district, which I thought was overly broad because there's a lot of correspondence that the board doesn't need to see. So it's, we need to revise that so that it's the, the correspondence that relates to the board that needs to be seen by the board. In one zero zero one, let me get there. The, the basics were that it, it talks about the property that we own and control, and it specifies the community center, racket club, pool, playgrounds, pavilions, and basketball courts are owned and operated, but it doesn't say anything about shuffleboard courts that we're soon to have, and maybe bocce ball courts. So we need to look at how to best revise that section. And interestingly, in one zero zero eight, it gives the district the right to employ speed tables to control vehicles, but it doesn't reference any other traffic calming devices like speed bumps or speed cushions or the traffic sign that we're, we're looking to put in. So that needs to be expanded to give us rights on traffic calming debate, the point. So those were the, the key issues that I brought up for Tanya that I thought the board should discuss and, and give some direction. It may be that this is kind of an opening discussion, and I would encourage all of the board to go back and, and read through to see if you catch anything that maybe we didn't address that I didn't catch. But I think at least these items need to be tweaked and cleaned up so that we've got a, a policy that works. Any other board discussion?
No, we're going to revisit this, Laurie.
Well, that's, that's the question, is do you, do you want to give direction now on these items? Or do you want to take time to, to review it and come back with perhaps other items to give direction on so that the board can clean it all up at one time?
That'd be better for me because I read your stuff that you had here, but you, you fully explained some of the things now, and so I'd like to be able to think about it and look at your stuff myself.
Yeah, okay.
If we can just give you, give you guys some time to review it, and then we'll, we can set up some individual meetings and see who's, who's come up with what to say, and then we'll put together a, a comprehensive revision and bring it to the board for approval.
Any other board comment at this point?
Should be a deadline on that. Let's not leave that open ended, let's say we're going to do it by some date.
Bring it back for discussion item at the second meeting in February? For March?
March. Okay, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Any public comment?
Yeah, it's better you go first.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other-
It would be helpful if, if somebody, let's say that Tanya or somebody would send out an idea of what people are thinking of changing it to. I mean, I'm reading like here, you know, on the individuals, the three-minute stuff. What are we looking to change there? I'm not sure.
Just adding it to the bottom of the agenda, which we didn't think we needed.
Well, that's what I mean-
Yeah, there's no changes to that one.
Can you give us like a little bit more help? This, we're thinking about taking this one, doing this one in, or?
Yes, based on this, yeah, there was no changes to the public comment policy. It was just we added it to the bottom of the agenda. I'm sorry, I didn't describe that in detail.
I think he's just asking for a summary of what I just-
Absolutely, yes.
Would help.
Yes.
Any other board discussion, or shall we move on to the next discussion item? Okay, next discussion item is updates to the changes of the election process. And I think that's going to go to our attorney.
Yeah, so as discussed at the previous meeting, my research has basically left us with, with three potential, you know, avenues to, to, to look into. We can stay the way we are with the landowner meeting based on one dollar, one vote. We can revert back to chapter, being controlled under chapter one eighty-nine, which would put us at one acre, one vote, which means that everybody that has less than one acre, which is the majority of the individual lots in Sun and Lake would have, would still have one vote. Or we can look into transitioning to the, to the five popular seats. The plan for, for one parcel, one vote, I cannot, none of my research has shown that that's going to be a feasible way to move forward. And since basically we have to ask the county for this change, we're going to have to have a, some sort of support to show why we think we should be able to move in the direction we want to move. And I just don't have any, none of the research showed that we could do that. So these are our three options, and we just, I guess we can discuss which one we want to move forward with.
Okay, any board comments?
I'm not going first.
I like the idea of the one eighty-nine. Just because I, I can't support anything other than making sure that our Canadian friends and our people that are here six months or five months or three months, that they have a vote. Now, how many votes they get, it's immaterial to me. I mean, but I honestly believe they deserve and should have the right to vote. And that's, whether you agree with me or not, I, I'm not going to waver from that, ever.
And I feel the exact same way. I would not support something that takes the voting rights away from the residents of this district. I think it's totally improper for us to even consider. And, you know, the, the big problem that because of Tango Wood and the hospital having such an input, well, in the research that I've done for the forty years that they've been involved in this district, I have found nothing which shows that this is a negative impact upon this district. If anything, it's a plus for this district. Financially, there's, they've done nothing wrong. So I, I think the landowners, if it takes being a landowner to own, so here. I do have like one question, though. If you go to the one acre, one vote, for example, if a person owns six townhomes, still one vote, or does it bend on size?
You just started, you start adding it up, so did most of the lots here? Yeah, most of the lots are in the district are quarter acre lots, so if you own, yep, correct. And so, but anyway, once you go over the one acre, if you say that you own five lots, so you've got one point two five, well, now you get two votes.
Thank you. So obviously, I was the one that wanted to do the one parcel, one vote, which I still think is the best way for us to go, which would include everybody. But since we can't do that legally, on the one eighty-nine deal, how many votes would Tango Wood get?
Eight, two seventy-three.
Two hundred and seventy-two?
However many acres they have.
So I would get one, and Tango would get two hundred and seventy-two. So what's the difference between that and the current one dollar, one vote? It's just a difference in the numbers, but they still have the weight. So-
So if Tanglewood would continue to vote, it would throw out the election. Understand the reason?
Yeah, but it's, the landowner is not a popular vote. The landowner is a landowner vote, and you can't compare it to a popular vote. Now, next year, there's going to be two or three popular seats, and that's what that should be. There's a difference between a landowner election and a popular vote.
I don't like Tanglewood controlling the super lots. That's my opinion, I think, I think that Tanglewood...
But Ray, there is a difference, so that's all I'm saying. You can't compare it to a popular, it's not, it's not a popular election.
No, I'm talking about which direction we're going to go with. The direction of 189 is the same as what we currently have, it's just a different set of numbers. And Tanglewood wants to participate, Tanglewood will still have the intertown gorilla, propose somebody, the intertown gorilla is a building, where they're even, is that correct?
But, after that same thing, every candidate has that same right to go to, and you procure that vote.
Absolutely, I'm not just stating that, I'm just stating a fact, that's all I'm trying to do. You won the election, I can't argue, I'm not challenging that. So my point would be, I just don't think that's fair for the people in the district, you know, the Canadians, I understand that, the people of law, they want to have their vote, but when their vote is meaningless, what are we, why are we kidding ourselves? If Tanglewood participates, it doesn't matter what these guys vote. And if that's the case, which I believe it is, then I would say we have to transition to five popular, popular elected seats. That would be my thought process in how to handle this. That's just my opinion. I was the one that wanted to do one parcel, 1 vote, but I don't think it works.
Joe, any thoughts?
Well, I'm the one that brought this up the skirt with, I guess, and the popular seat transition was probably the easy way out, and I understand the objections. It's got to be somehow made to be more equitable, to be able to go over and harbor 271 votes was one visit to me is just tasteful, so, but I don't see better options. That's the best of the three up there, I guess, in my opinion.
Just as a point of clarification, if we do revert to, back to 189, we have to look into the urbanization schedule, and that may change the makeup of the board, and we may put us four popular, one landowner seat, I don't, I don't know, and we won't know until that study gets done. We're, we're trying to look into it now, I've got some information from the, what was done in the past, that'll hopefully give me an idea of if we make that transition to 189, what the board makeup would look like.
And not to ignore the change in voting rights that that would create, that would be a better situation than we have now, in my opinion.
But significantly, it's also worth noting that if we go to 189, eventually we will go to five popular votes, because that's what it calls for. And as urbanization grows, eventually we're going to get to five popular votes regardless, because the purpose of the 189 and the special district voting policy is to not give the rights so much to individual landowners as giving rights to the developers and the major landowners, because they don't really get a vote in the popular elections, and they have the biggest risks and the most to invest. So the process is designed so that in a relatively short period of time, usually, in most developments, you get to urbanization and you go to all popular elected seats. Our case is, we've got 50 years of the development, and because our original developer died, and we went into major transitions over time, and we don't have a major developer, we haven't gotten the growth over that 50 years that would have been expected. But eventually, we're going to get there, and eventually, when that happens under 189, we're going to be at five popular seats. That's the rule.
Yes, I understand that, but I just think we should do it, and we have to.
So the question would be, does it make sense to go to 189, or stay with what we've got, or go to five popular seats now? Because if we go to 189, eventually we're going to evolve to five popular seats. If we stay with what we have, we're not subject to 189, and we can make the decision when we want to. As you know from the last vote, I still favor five popular seats, because we're going to get there eventually, and it was the intention when we created the district 50 years ago that we would be there by now.
Had to be labor the election, but I was beat by a margin of 2 to 1 if you take away Tanglewood, not 3. Once I procured, or got the notice from Tanglewood that they were going to support me, I made a decision on how I was going to continue my campaign. And I did not go canvassing door to door. Had I gone there door to door, maybe my, the outcome wouldn't have made any difference about what Tanglewood decided to do. But since I procured it, and I had many other things in my, I'm building a house, I had time constraints, I thus decided I didn't need to do that. And I took my chances that they weren't going to offset that, those votes, it happened to work. So to say that because of Tanglewood is the only reason I'm here, maybe, maybe not, that's an assumption.
I don't think anybody said that. Certainly, if you think I said it...
No, I did not, I don't think that you said that, it's been said.
Okay, any other board comments on this discussion?
Well, just one other thing, option 3 is not necessarily, we can't just pick that and say that's what we want. Is that true?
What, the transition to five popular seats? I mean, yeah, I think we can, if that's the board's direction, we just go to the county and say this is what we want to do, and...
Was I reverting to the 189?
Yeah, we don't have to revert to 189 first.
Is there any other board, and then we'll open it up to public comment?
David, remember, you remember, in the, in the, is this on?
Yep.
You have a member of the board, and you remember very closely, it says, "My research suggests one parcel, 1 vote." And what's like the, the case says, if you show, I didn't find anything specific, can you tell me specifically in the case, that you showed on your, here's the book, where it says that the one parcel, 1 vote, I mean, it is, if we win the $1.01 vote, it doesn't make any sense, since we're not operating under 189, that we can't go to one parcel, 1 vote. Did you talk to the 189 about this?
I did.
Did she agree with that?
She said that she had not seen anything that would support it. The thing is, not saying that someone's saying we can't do it, we have to show why we can do it. And there's no case law that I have been able to find that says that you can do that.
What do we do, if we want those $1.01?
I do not know. I was not, I was not the attorney then, so...
Well, I'll tell you one thing, if you go back to 189, they make the way is, you're going to have the same problem in the next election, and it doesn't, this doesn't make any sense, and if you go to the urbanist's estate, if you go back to 189, it would be under that 189 rules of urban...
Correct.
Everybody knows, back in 2006, 2007, when we did the studies, there was factions on the board that wanted to protect, hand up the eyes, vote, to have friendly people on that board, that were in the voting box. And I understand that, that's all, that's all along the line. The fact that, that the urbanist's estate we did was flawed, because, because Ross McCallister, the district attorney at the time, the county attorney at the time, in his opinion, said that acreage, it doesn't have anything to do with urbanization, should be removed from the acreage formulation. It was supported by Terry Lewis, his initial, initial letter, supporting, 100% supporting what he said, and I can't notice there, all newly someone, who will ultimately convince Terry Lewis to go make a 180 degree turn and change his opinion, and that's what we used. And in there, and Ross McCallister, he said, "Goldwood property, managed facilities, gray waterways, lake slums, drainage areas, watercourses, weapons, wildlife resource areas, federal state, county don't land in the district, not allowed for residential development, including district, home land, parks and recreation areas, roads, road right of way, the city of Tanglewood, utility and transit pay fees, business and commercial properties." All that should come out. If we did an equitable urbanist's estate, we would have at least four, actually one studies, where 68% are urbanized, yet the board chose the 42%, who didn't give us a third seat, and by the way, that's how we got a third seat, it's going with $1.01 vote. That was a trail, it was a county, and they had to pay 3%. I can see where this is going, it's, we're going to go back to 189, and you're going to have the same problem, unless we do a fast, thorough, fair, equitable urbanization setting, that gives us the right for an session percentage of seats on this board. This place is 25 years old, 25 years old, it would be under 190, we would have down past this 35 years ago. It's not right, it's not fair, and I know where, I know where the fact is on the board are now.
In 5 minutes.
Why Tanglewood voted, Tanglewood's not going to vote unless they got some minutes. And what that is, I'm not helping, we'll see.
Thank you, Mr. Halbig.
And this is 3, 100%. And there's people now sitting on this board, who are, who are you guys, who are you guys that are all part of the five popular seats? Now we're getting reversed, it's just not right.
Thank you, Mr. Halbig.
And nobody, you guys, look here, open up, the guys over here, because this is fair, this is absolutely not fair.
Thank you, Mr. Halbig.
I'm Paul McAllister, I'm a resident, I'm Canadian, I don't understand a whole bunch of that stuff, because I don't live here, and I'm sure Americans don't understand a whole bunch of stuff that's going on here, but all I'm trying to find out is to cut to the chase, not sarcastically, to give me a simple thing, do we count Canadians? When people, Americans are here three months, four months, five months, they should count too. So I don't know if it's, do we count, we don't count, Americans, Canadians should three months, four months, five months. I know I've been coming here 26 years, and that's $300,000 plus. I don't mind that, I love it here, I'm treating it here fairly, I have local plates on it anyway. And when I look at this, and I've been asked lots of times, and I've asked other people saying, what's this all about? We don't know what this is all about, and I'm just, bring it down to simplicity, we can all be simplistic Canadians, and say, you know what we're saying? Bring it down more, I'll go to kindergarten, I have to understand something down. I've been 40 years, where are you standing? I don't like Canadians, I'm out of here. I've got Americans that are kin too, so I don't have any kind of demarcation, or here in the middle, here, here in the middle, there. So I'm just trying to look at that, see, I understand some of that, but I almost have to go in Canada with 189. I can quote it, if you're going to vote in Canada, you have no idea about that either. So I'm just trying to find out what that is, in simple English, that I can understand, and the rest of life, Canadian friends or whatever. I think I've been here 26 years, and I can treat it, and I just like to know right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ross McCallister, and when I say resident, there's meaning to that. My residency is in Florida, in the States. Yours is in Canada. You get to vote in Canada, I don't. For your government, for your local government, and for your national government.
Mr. Crossley, please speak to the board, not to the other audience.
Oh, please tell Mr. McAllister, that there's meaning to the word resident. In our statutes, and the definition is, you're a resident where you pass your vote, where you declare your residency, what it says on your driver's license, what it says on your voter registration card, and that's what we get to vote on here. We all, as residents here, we get to vote on the county commissioner. Canadians don't, because they're not registered. When I say Canadian, I mean a Canadian resident. Can you tell me somewhere in Canada, that a resident of Sunlake could go up there, buy a piece of property, and get to vote in the national elections, or run in the local elections again?
Like, I answered that perfectly, I don't know anybody who in Sunlake did something. If I did, I could tell you, I'm not talking about residents here, I know the group of Canadian that not do, I'm not going to do it, I'm all with it.
Do we carry any political questions? Yes, we do. Keep in mind that 40% of the support of this all goes by the residents and the board, who keep it up, as it is during the six or seven or eight months when you're not here. We're happy to have you when you come down, that's...
I didn't say something else to you, sir.
Wait, you guys want to take it outside, take it outside, okay?
I don't want to take it outside, it's just a question.
Well, then, we're trying to run a meeting here, come on.
This is...
I have a question, any thoughts?
Yeah.
I wish I could.
Okay.
I know where I am, I know what I'm doing.
Thank you.
Good morning, George Tubman, murder resident, like Paul McCallister, governor of 26 years. We've had this argument for the past 20 years. Going back to 185, or 189, I'm sorry, what says you transition over a period of time into five popular elected seats, it never will happen in my lifetime, or your lifetime. Because it hasn't happened in 45 years, and that's on the table. As for the Canadians, they're part-time snowbirds. Canadians actually have another choice, and states that want snowbirds can stay as long as they want, they can also change their membership if they want, and it will save them, save them from lack of labor. But the very issue, when you look at the three options, actually the four, that supervisory brook connection, to me, makes some sense. If there was some legal way to do it, give Tanglewood Act Number 3, 2, 5, 1, they would find the district to vote at that point in time. But under the current system, unless you change it, Canadians' votes, snowbird's votes don't count, because if you are fortunate enough to get the hostile votes and Tanglewood's, you're not going to be here, so their votes, those might not have a vote. So you fix that, this goes on and on and on. The, to me, there's something just stated, that on the election day, swung by some baseless individual, two little thousand miles away, probably had never set foot in Sunlake, has no best of intentions, and in fact has tried to get removed from Sunlake through different occasions, and I understand that's something to go on, and try to remove, and something to do, so I'm not going to fault my time to do it. So, thought about fairness, I don't know what's fair, allowing it to grow to unfair with local residents, including Canadians, and our snowbird friends, votes doesn't mean a thing, you carry two on the hostile, and Tanglewood, thank you.
Any other public comment?
I have a question.
Bring it back to the board.
Hey, David, let me ask you a question. You said that you, you talked to Carmichael about this previously, and she said she needed a justification for us wanting to do it?
Exactly.
Is not us wanting to do it enough of the justification?
Well, no, I mean, we have to have a legal, we have to have a legal basis, and I've, I think I've stated that in the past, is, I'm not entirely sure how we got to the $1.01 vote, I assume that Mr. McClure and Mr. Macbeth, when they, you know, whatever legal research they did justified it, the legal research that I have done does not support, or I cannot find anything that would support a one parcel, one vote premises.
Which means, but that means it can go either way, right? If you can't find something that says you can't do it, and can't find something that says you can do it.
No, do we have to find something that says we can? We can't do it unless there's something that says we can do it.
Okay.
How does that get determined?
How, how does that get determined?
I mean, why if somebody else had tried this before, and, and got shot down, do we know that?
Well, I think, I think that's how, how chapter 189 came into existence, I mean, it's, is, is, is enough people got together and got the, because generally, uh, you, it's the, the whole premise of America is one person, one vote, and the chapter 189 is a carve-out by the state of Florida that says that we, in order to, you know, uh, help encourage development, we're going to allow this one acre, one vote premise, you know, to get places developed.
My question was, if the, if the one parcel, one vote has not been approved by some entities of courts, why wouldn't we be the first to try it?
Well, I think we'd have to, we, then, we would want, we would want a law passed, you're talking about changing state legislature, I mean, or the, the Florida statutes, that's what we're, would we, we'd be trying to do. Because there is no statute that supports the one parcel, one vote premise.
But there's also no statute that prevents it, right?
Well, I mean, arguably, yeah, that's correct, but I mean, the, the whole, the way the laws work is, though, though, is, you're, what, what is stated is what's permissible, so, the, there is nothing that says it can happen, and so, in order to make, if you wanted it to be able to happen, you'd have to go to the state legislature and say, hey, this is something that we want, put on the law books, and go through that process, we just can't go do it and say, well, there's nothing that says we can't do it.
David, I, I just clarify even to the audience, when I voted for one vote, one person, and, and I still would, I'd like to do that, I, I don't care if Tanglewood gets more than two votes, I mean, I don't, but my other concern is, is the other people here, but, when, when that was explained, Ron was here, he said he was gonna do what the board wanted, I just assumed that we could do that, and I, I only can speak for myself and Dan Stiegel, who is no longer on the board, neither one of us were talked to about this. I, I think Ron had conversations with people that aren't even on, that aren't supervisors, and they're, that's their agenda, but I don't, I like this discussion, because then I, I know what everybody thinks, but, we were led to believe that, or at least I was, that somebody was gonna talk to me about it. I think Joe, to my knowledge, because I can't speak for Ray or Neil, and who they've talked to, but, nobody from the county commissioner's office, or the county, or anybody has talked to me about what I want, and I was, I thought it was okay that we could do this, one person, one vote, and I still want that.
Well, no, that's.
Uh, it, it's just not fair, when, I'm a supervisor here, I'm one of five votes, I need to know what's going on, and not just the president, or not what's going on behind my back, uh, so these kind of discussions are good.
Yeah, I, I don't know that anybody's tried to do anything to end it, but, I think it was fully addressed that in, at one meeting where President Branson wasn't able to be there, I attended a county meeting, and met with staff, but that was right after the board had given direction for a call that we wanted to go to five popular votes, so that was the message that I was bringing to the county.
Yeah, but where did they, where did they come up with that? Where did they come up with that?
It came up at a public.
Nobody talked to me about it.
We had a public discussion at the board about it.
We voted for, we voted 4-0.
That was for one vote, one person?
No.
That was what I voted for.
Our, our original discussion, based on a discussion point that President Branson brought up, was to go to five popular elected seats, and the entire board agreed at that time.
Okay.
And then, after I met with the county, I know that President Branson had a meeting with, with the county, uh, and the board reversed its decision at a later meeting, going, uh, three, three to, three in favor of, um, one parcel, keeping the, the landowner vote, and one being still looking for five popular, and we haven't had a discussion about it again until today.
Well, I guess I, that's where I was, because I didn't, nobody talked to me about it, period, not, not the commissioner's office, not Sunlake, nothing.
I don't feel bad, nobody talked to me about it.
Yeah, I think, I think the point was that we gave our, our council the direction to speak with county council to figure it out, and bring it back to us, which is what he's done.
Yeah.
So, uh, any further board discussion and direction for staff on this matter?
Okay, if you're sure that we can't do what I originally wanted, then I would like, oh, I'm gonna screw this one up again, what do I want to do again? I wanna, I wanna have a vote on the five popular elected seats, whatever you want to call it, I wanna get a vote on it tonight.
So you're making a motion?
I, I'm trying to do it again. I'm making a motion that we have a resolution to go to five popular seats.
Okay.
Anybody want to second it?
Is there a second? I'll second it.
All right, there's a motion, we'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion about the motion? Any public comment on the motion?
Point one, when you talk about one person, one vote, you're not talking about the five popular elected seats.
No, he's, he is recommending that we go to five popular elected seats, that's the motion.
Okay, but, in response to supervisor Brooks' statement, I think he was saying that he didn't recognize it that way.
Yes, I did.
So what way did you recognize it?
I recognized it as one person, one vote, and that's what, that's what I thought, and I could have been wrong, I mean, it's.
So what are their proposals?
Now, it's, they're proposing now with a motion that five, five popular seats.
Which is one person, one vote.
Well, but, Canadians and, uh, uh, snowbirds can't vote.
And I'll preface again by saying, I think it's unfortunate that they can't vote, I think it's unfortunate that the weight system is such that a big company, or whatever you want to call them, can dictate the outcome of an election, with all that being considered, I think this is the best alternative.
Unless you've got another alternative.
Oh, no.
And that's leave things the way they are, and that alternative guarantees, if you have those two elements, you can't be beating an election, no matter if you go a thousand to make it.
If you leave, if you leave things the way they are, we would have.
I'm saying if you don't change them, then this continues on, and two boards now, they'll be having the same discussion, they've had it the last 40 years.
Well, I think. And I think the key point is whether or not we have landowner seats that can be voted on by landowners that wouldn't normally be able to, wouldn't normally be able to vote in a public.
I'd like to clarify one point that the attorney made, he said he doesn't know where the $1.01 vote originated, and I think, David, I doubt it, because I'm confident, I think it originated in like 2004, 2005, at a meeting down at the Ag Center, the county commissioner, in response to a lawsuit filed by, at that time, the property owners, the association with Sunlake. And we've gone through the same discussions at the time, must be equitable way to do it. Well, when it started getting into density, there's five different methods to wait for a little vote, that discussion's been a couple hours, they finally got rid of that and said, look, and the idea came from the county attorney, who was also a veteran, was agreed on by our attorney, John McClure, to go to $1.01 vote, that eliminates the density for the 189, and that is the decision made by the attorney of the structure committee, Terry Lewis, and he has that too, that, that gets rid of that density requirement, so they voted to do that at that time, that's where it came from, either revert back to 185, that's where it's valid, in fact, the four then, it's not a matter of three popular elected seats, it's a matter of three, three landowner seats, they give the Sunlake property owners an extra popular elected seat as a agreement with the Rockwell lawsuit, and that's how that happens. So, if you don't fix this thing today, it goes on and on and on, and certain people going to aggravate her all the time, go to Tanglewood, my grandfather owned a property in Shoreham, no a street for 40 years, and never voted in the election, he didn't lose state vote, so, you gotta make a decision, lie or wrong, stand up and make a decision.
Thank you for your clarification. Anyway, the point I wanted to reiterate was whether or not the part-time residents can have a vote in a popular election, they can still have a voice at this meeting, we're happy to hear your comments, and take them into consideration with every decision we make, which, given the situation that we have now, where the, the bulk of the votes and landowners are controlled by the major landowners, which was the intent of a special improvement district, whether or not your vote means any more than a property owner vote would mean is up for debate, so going to five property owner's seats, or five publicly elected seats, doesn't minimize your right to come here and talk to us.
Paul McAllister, I don't need the microphone.
You do, because we, we're recorded, it's recorded.
I'm not here to raise stats.
Okay.
All I want is clarification, if we can, I'm a resident, but I'm a lover, I understand what residency is, to be honest, if I can't vote as a Canadian down here, I understand that, don't take them, if I can't, and they say you can, very cool, if the Americans are down here for four or five months, and they can't vote because they're not permanent, I understand that, I just want clarification, we don't want you to vote down here in this Sunlake district, because you're only here four or five months and you're a Canadian, or you're only down here four or five months as an American all the way up the coast, that's all we're interested in, hey, if you don't care, you can, to a restriction, you cannot, that's all we're interested in, period.
We're working on it.
So, that's all I'm asking about, is, you don't, you don't ask a question, you don't get an answer, everybody should vote on this, one way or that, so, my face, I wish, it's how we, we can do that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Tanglewood residents, so I understand all this, uh, you go to five popular elected seats, you have to be a resident to vote.
Correct, a registered voter and resident, yes.
Uh, as I'm saying, uh, you can say that Tanglewood is, as was mentioned in the 400 Conduits, a landowner's seat, but that still means that they, that people who have substantial investment in this area only control two seats on the board, if they were to use their influence with the two directors that are holding them to their seat, or their seat, uh, if they were to propose something that was so unethical to the interest of everybody else in Sunlake, they still wouldn't have a majority of vote in order to get what they would want, uh, put in place when that happens. So I don't see that the fact that they essentially, if they choose to, can control two seats on the board, really, uh, in a dramatic way, changes what would transpire in, in any proposal. Aside from that, with a marketing perspective, I kind of like the concept of a, what you would call unique feature, the fact that a Canadian owns property here, gives him a vote on how things are handled in Sunlake, to me, is a significant unique feature, is related to every other developer in Florida, to be a nice telling them. Aside from that, uh, Canadians and snowbirds that, let's say, have invested $300,000 in real estate in Sunlake, and spend $15,000 or $20,000 a year here, is it really fair, and we say it's not fair for the property owners, if we allow these other people to vote, that are making this investment, that are spending this amount of money, is it really fair to them to not have any say in an official tent, uh, what transpires in Sunlake? There's two, two ways to look at fairness, while the existence, existing system may not be perfect, uh, if we would ever get our act together, sell more real estate in Sunlake, that problem with regard to the ability of Tanglewood and Hostel to control both, uh, two seats, would disappear over time, so I don't really see the urgency of changing anything, uh, for where it is right now, in respect.
David, I can't understand, the lies is I can't understand, if Tanglewood votes, it's all, it doesn't make any difference, I want you to vote, but it's not gonna happen, it's just not gonna happen. You can't, it's time to fish or cut bait, I think, or you guys said several times, you're for the five popular seats, let's get this out of the way behind us, and get it done. I think the motion on the board is to go to five popular seats, is that my correct?
You're correct.
Thank you.
Tom Coste, resident, I'd like to throw one other little tidbit into the conversation here, there's, there's 1,100 registered voters in Tanglewood, who can vote here in Hines County, that cannot vote for their local government, their local government being Sunlake improvement district, they can't vote because they're, they're renters, and there's countless renters in Sunlake who also cannot vote, because they don't own property here. I understand corporate investment, and people being able to roll their stock in a, in a, in a, a commercial, uh, business entity, but we're talking about the most basic principle of government in the United States, and that's voting by the people, and government by the people, the people being the resident, registered voters in the United States, it's, it's the same with the other country, that's what we're talking about, we got 1,100 registered voters in Hines County that can vote for Ron Hannity, that can't vote for Neil O'Toole, even though Neil O'Toole isn't in control, 20% of his board is Neil O'Toole, and another 20% is reaching you guys, I'm just saying that that, that's, that's the goal, that's the way we're trying to get to, where it is, the way it is throughout the Uni- United States, with regard to people being able to vote for their local government, and having proper, a moral chase, thank you.
Any further public comment? Bring it back to the board? Any, any board comment?
No question.
Chrissy.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Harret?
No.
Supervisor Gilpin?
No.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Hotelling?
Yes.
So, with, with the, with the motion carried, then I, I gather, we've got a couple of things to work out with the county, and you'll take care of that, uh, let the county know that the board has voted, and then we've got to clarify what elections are coming up, and what seats. board has voted, and then we've got to clarify what elections are coming up and what seats and how that all works out. So if you can work that out with the county and bring it back to us for any other items we need to discuss.
I have a question. Paul, about the elections, is that something you guys are going to make, that decision? Like, I was just elected for four years. That will stay the same, right?
Correct. Everybody that's currently seated will stay seated for their terms. And when we do the, when we do the transition, we'll have to figure out how that, the people that are sitting in landowner's seats, because that's what's going to happen, if the county, we're going to draft something that will take, will move the landowner's seats and create five popular seats, we'll have to figure out how that will be staggered.
And, and...
Will not serve out their terms as they are, so don't tell them that you, they will.
Let's, let's clarify because...
Yeah, we're going to figure that out.
One of the points from a prior discussion when we were talking about going to four or five popular elected seats was that we would also revise the policy that instead of serving for the unexpired term, it would be until the next general election, which obviously could impact my term, which instead of being for four years, one of which has been served to, till the next popular election, which would be 2020 this year, unless it's grandfathered. And I don't know what the, what the process on that is. Am I grandfathered in because I was appointed for a four-year term? Or am I subject to now the new rule that goes in after I was appointed to a four-year term?
We'll get that all figured out with the county and come back with the proposal.
And so with five popular seats, the voting will occur only in presidential election year, so 2020, the qualifying period for Supervisor Brooks and Supervisor Branson is, I believe, the third week of June, second or third week of June, don't quote me on that, but that's through the supervisor of elections office. So the next election will occur in 2022.
And just, you said presidential election, that's a general election, but not presidential in 2022?
Well, general, I'm sorry. Well, 2022 would be general, so that would be, we would look at those terms and we would need to work through the details on that.
But we will have input on that, right? This isn't something you guys are going to make.
No, we're going to bring back the details on that. Yes, sir.
Moving on, number six, add-on items. Any?
None.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Staff reports.
Good morning, supervisors. Omar Daisu, he's finance director. Know we have to approve the treasury report for December, so I just wanted to go over a couple of highlights for the first quarter on performance and where we are. We'll start off with the general fund. I wanted to go over assessments. This is the second year where we've had the new assessment rates for vacant property. Looks like we're trending pretty similar. We're at 68% of our collections for assessment, which is just at 2.25 million. Last year, we were at 66%, so we're trending a little higher through December. Currently, as of February, I pulled the report, we're at about 2.5 million, which is about 75%. And we're about 78% by the end of February, so very similar numbers, we're tracking the same. Overall, net profit as of December, we're at about a million dollars in the general fund, so performance has been pretty steady and consistent, all the departments. And then we did have a $400,000 transfer to finish out the kitchen project, so that's complete. I've sent you guys the capital projects report, as well as the kitchen report, to show the total cost for that over the last three years. And then on the utility side, I want to show you guys the revenues to date is $720,000 in income. That is $100,000 higher than last year, majority due to the rate increase, so I just wanted to show you that it is being reflected in the new financials. And a net income is being shown as of, in the amount of $279,000, which is $50,000 higher than last year. So trending well in the utility fund, which will cover some of the other deficits and other funds. Also, wanted to mention, I sent an email regarding the assessment methodology on the uniform method of collection. If you have any questions, we can discuss that, but I believe my email is pretty straightforward on our findings.
So I assume the recommendation is to continue doing what we're doing rather than changing?
Yes, that would be our recommendation.
Okay. Thank you, Omar.
I just got a quick update. The speed, the speed, the speed cushions have been installed in two areas, the ABC street area. We have two foot Sunrise and Kamona will be going in next week. They seem to be working pretty good. The residents are very, very happy. People stopping, actually getting out of their cars and shaking our hands.
You know, you know it's going to happen.
Yes, I know.
All the people from Baga Rose, all the people from Baga Rose, is that the name of the street, Baga Rose?
Absolutely.
They'll be here shortly because now that Cape Torrey has got two speed bumps, they're all going to take the next street over.
But, well, they're working, working on happening, we've got two streets now, so...
Those things are for 20 miles an hour, because I was going over them yesterday.
Yeah.
They're, they're pretty, they stop you.
Yes, me and I were over, I know Zogan over, I, you know, I anybody guys have over. I mean, it's just low people down, you know?
Oh, yeah.
So, and, and, I mean, he's been over, the sheriff department has been out also, so hopefully some low people are down in the vicinity.
Can everybody hear me? Hello, hello, hello?
Better, we're good. All right, guys, can you hear me?
Speak up.
Okay, we already covered most of the stuff in my report with, as regarding financials, forecasting, and the membership update. I do have a couple of things with the product update. I'm not sure if you've been in the restaurant in the last two days, but we have moved four of the TVs out onto the bar side, so they are visible from the bar. You'll see three that are up high, and we actually replaced the other one on the wall and moved it up a little bit, so it will be consistent. All four of those TVs are consistent, they're the same. Another thing, I promised you that we would have acoustical quotes, and they are all in. We have not made a decision on that yet, but I do have three quotes. Me and Tanya have been in some discussion with that. We do have a gentleman that's from, from the one company that we really like. He's going to come visit us. Obviously, I'm not an acoustic major, so I'm going to have him come in, explain his quote and to both of us, and how that will look and how that will affect the sound. So I need to just gather a little more information from him. Me and Tanya will discuss it. He's also going to bring down a sample of the product as well. What's the price range of the quotes? The price range is in about $15,000, $19,000, and $19,000. The company that we really like is actually the lowest bid, so that works out good.
Suggest that we have whoever we're talking with, see if they can get a decibel reading of the restaurant as it is now and a guarantee as to what they can reduce it to?
Right, so they, he did, the reason why I really like this guy is because he did a really full study. He came down and he, and he said it was bad. I'm not sure what the decibel levels were, but I don't think he measured, he said it was bad in comparison to what he normally sees, so it's worse than other cases. Yeah, we know it's bad. So we'll go over that.
When the guy comes to make a presentation, are we allowed to be observers?
Who is sitting here?
So we can hear what the guy's saying to you guys? Are we allowed to do that?
I, it would be horrible, one on one, you know?
It would make, it would make a decision.
Not multiple supervisors. I mean, initially...
They could do it here.
Yes, but I mean, the initial meeting, I want to see, I want to see these panels, I want to see where he's talking about placing them. We need to be in the restaurant on the initial discussion, but if the supervisors would like to talk to him in a, in a meeting...
I don't, I didn't really want to talk to him, I just want to hear what he has to say. It would make, making a decision a lot easier if I heard it from him.
But perhaps what we could do is have you guys meet with him, and before we make a decision, have him come and present to the board?
That'd be absolutely...
Even though it's, it's in, within your spending, I understand, but I think the board would like to hear...
Absolutely, if the board would like to hear his presentation and the details, we can absolutely do that.
That's just me, I don't remember, I'm not sure about the other guy.
Yeah, the only negative of that is it was going to delay the action, because then they can't start work until we've approved it, but, but it would be good to know, rather than feeling like, okay, we had somebody come in and it didn't work.
Right.
Did they give you any timeframe on how long it would take them to do the work?
No, that would be part of the process of us meeting with him and getting that information as far as, you know, how it will perform, how it will look, and how long it's going to take. I, I don't imagine this was going to, it's not going to take more than a few days probably to do this, if that. The only, the, I believe the biggest obstacle that they're going to have is they need to have a lift, because they need to get up to some higher areas in there, and obviously navigating that through the restaurant is, you know, it's a timing thing. Obviously, we have to have tables out of the way and all sorts of that stuff.
If you could close the restaurant, maybe we consider delaying it till the summer. I know it's loud in there.
And, and that could be a possibility.
I'd close down the restaurant for a few days either.
And that's definitely one of the things when we discuss them. I mean, if it's a one-hour project for him to do that, we can do it at 8 o'clock in the morning, we're fine. If it's a 12-hour project, then you're correct. So those are, that's some of the information we need to gather.
If he's familiar, working with restaurant situations, perhaps they can do the work overnight.
Correct, and that could be, that could be another option as well.
Does that include the main part of the clubhouse and the periphery?
Correct, not, not on the banquet side, so that would be the main bar area and the new, and the new, yes, that is correct. The only other thing, I guess Earl's not here, I'm sure he had an update.
Yeah, I have a question for Earl that I can ask. If you could check out something for me, I thought we put the curving in by the new driving range, or the, excuse me, the curving in by the, the new range area that he curved off. I thought we were going to do additional parking places, and we have not at this point. I could be wrong, I may have misunderstood.
I can follow up with him on that. I mean, it does...
Yeah, I'm interested if there were ever plans to put...
As far as striping it, you mean?
Yes, just striping it.
As far as striping it, I can follow up with that. I mean, it does create extra area for parking. I don't, I'm sure with the striping of plans...
I told you I talked about it one time, but I'm not 100% sure.
You may have, you may have, I just don't think I've been in that conversation.
We could use the parking spots there, I think it would be helpful.
Yeah, we can look into striping it, if it's not already in the plan, but we'll look into it for sure.
Oh, you guys, and tell Earl he did a great job on the, the entryway.
Yeah, the front, did you want an update on any of that? Yeah, the front entryway is, is really coming along really, really good.
Makes a world of difference.
Yeah, and I'm sure there's, there's more stuff that's going to be going on around the clubhouse as well, as far as cleaning up some of those looks. And they've already done a lot, but there's still a little bit more to go as far as cleaning up that look.
Mike, isn't those scrub, those three scrub things up by the entrance going to be replaced by palms?
That is my understanding.
Yeah, that's what I was told.
Those trees, yeah, those, they only look good.
That will make a big difference in what it looks like.
Yeah, they look really great when they bloom, but it's for a very short period of time, and then it's, yeah, so yes.
They're not very nice.
I am, they are going to be replaced. Any other discussion on front entrance?
How we come with the trailers?
Um, that will be next couple of weeks.
It's a work in progress.
Well, he's got to finish his, the...
I was finishing, finishing the speed cushions and then have my next drive.
Just tell, you know, all you got to do is tell, to make me happy, you say, I can't get it done till June. And then I'll, okay.
I think I have the time in the world to make that.
I mean, tell me, I mean, just say June, if that's what it is.
Next few weeks, I'll be back on it.
You know what's going to happen in a few weeks? I'm going to ask you again.
Yeah, it's coming.
See, see if you can firm up a date by our next meeting.
Hopefully.
Was there some work being done on prioritizing acquitties, or are they still working on that?
Prior, for, Dan, I don't know if you want to answer that one.
I was hoping to have an update for you today on that.
I know Earl wanted to go back to his constituents and make sure he was voicing their opinions correctly. He wanted to double-check to make sure he had the acquittie lady's opinions correct before he presented something.
I was hoping you'd have that today, but if we need to wait till the next meeting, that's fine.
Um, so we kind of touched base on the new, the new menu rollout. Obviously, we have some, we answered a few questions on that. Now, we rolled out a new menu by request from, from a few people and a lot of public input. The menu is drastically different currently than it was on the old, the last menu, so you're going to see, you see a lot of new items, and just so everybody understands, when we bring out a lot of new items, obviously they have to replace some items. So I, I knew it would happen, that some people want to know where their favorite entree went, and it's, that's just part of the process, that, you know, as we roll out the menus and change them, which we do about three times a year, some items come, some items go, so unfortunately, not everybody's going to have their favorite item on there all the time. Doesn't mean it will never come back, it's just, this go-around, it is not there, but the feedback on the menu's actually been, been wonderful. People like to see the, the fresh new look and a lot of new items. Couple of people, obviously, are missing their favorite things. As I spoke to you before, we took that opportunity to kind of realign our cost of goods with this menu, as, you know, over time, cost of the product does change. So that's why you will see a few, there wasn't very drastic, you know, price changes to our, to our menu. With that being said, is there any more questions?
Is it also a fact that you took the 10% discount away on your sides? At least that's what I've been told.
Yeah, right, so with the original discussion on the 10% discount, and we, and I would go back to prior meetings before my appointment to my position, my understanding on the 10% discount was it was for a la carte entree items only. I'm not sure how that was discussed here at the board level. I mean, we could go back and visit that, that was my understanding, that that was what that was for. It wasn't for special events, it wasn't for sides, it wasn't for appetizers, although we have, in certain interests, you know, I think we've extended it into appetizers, but that was my understanding.
But that happens a lot here. The understanding is, I mean, it's, I don't want...
So the board here will know, if I am wrong in that, we can adjust, I mean...
10% off food?
Is that how it was presented here at the board level? Is that, is that, I just want, is that, if that's what you agreed on as a board, then that would be my direction to go back.
Why couldn't you find that out first, instead of making a bunch of people mad because they no longer get their 10%?
Well, I don't, I don't believe they were to begin with, because when we implemented it in, in October, it was, it was implemented as 10% off entrees, a la carte entrees.
My understanding from our discussion was it was 10% off in the restaurant, so I would say that wouldn't include banquets, but anything in the restaurant.
Well, not foods, but except for alcohol. Alcohol was never part of it.
Correct. But that's the things we're, I mean, there's just too many assumptions, Mike, and, and that's all we got to do. I mean, if you need clarification, come back, but to make that decision, and then we hear about it, I'm telling you, it isn't something simple.
Sure, I understand your concern, that was just my direction in a different position, was to implement it in that manner.
I'm just saying that happens a lot, that's...
Sure, we'll, we'll work to clarify that, but as it stands now, it's 10% off a la carte entrees.
And also, I would think after this length of time, that we wouldn't have to tell the staff to go back and take the 10% off after they've already filled out the ticket again.
I understand that concern as well, and I'm, I'm working on that, and obviously, and again, we have, you'll see some new faces again.
Most of the time, it's the person that's been there for a long time.
I understand, and we will, I will continue to work on that issue, and I, it is my, it is my goal to definitely improve on that, and that is definitely, not only a pet peeve of, of any of you, but... it is my it is my goal to definitely improve on that. That is definitely not only a pet peeve of of any of you, but it's also one of mine. And I am working diligently on that.
You're making some positive steps, and you turn around and take them away with the actions. Friday night, Saturday night's buffet, people thought it was fantastic. But then into the night by sitting around having to wait for the checkout ticket and then having to go back and get it again is just. Enough said for now, except your service is improved. And then the next time I go in there, I see the same behavior as I was before. It's got to be managed. This is not acceptable. That's not.
You know, most restaurants that I go into and there's a new employee, they have the new employee, the new server walking around with an experienced server. And she says, you know, the person says, this is I'm training this person to be a server, blah, 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 blah. And you go from there. I've never seen anybody try and train anybody in our building.
Sure. Well, that's actually Tanya just had a new server yesterday being trained by a prior server. That is something new in the policy that I mentioned in last month's report is is I have put out a training manual, which actually includes this process now. This is something that we just started early.
On the job training is more than a manual.
Correct, which is which is part of the implementation of the manual. It's on the job training and, you know, Tanya got to witness that yesterday. So that that is that is happening currently.
Have you ever looked at or had someone come in and talk to you about electronic tickets? So you got automatic feedback right back to the to the kitchen. They can put on their member, non-member. It's this iPad. I mean, and it's just here we are writing them out and then get it wrong anyway.
I understand. We.
Have we ever had anybody to give us a what do it cost to do that?
As far as having individual tablets for servers?
Yeah.
I have. I have looked into that. And about a year or two ago, I looked through that process. It is. It is possible. However, it will be a little expensive upfront. But I when I spoke to with our point-of-sale system, which is IBS or Integrated Business Systems, I spoke to the technicians at their company of how that might work. And and they said that they their system does not match up very well with that hardware. Now, they said it's it is doable, but they were afraid that it will actually create more service errors than it would help. Just because the program was not designed. Our software is more of a golf club operational software, more related to golf. It handles tee times, tee sheets, membership of and and then it has the food and beverage module. And the food and beverage module is not the strong point of our software. And we manage through that. And and they're afraid that if we went to that, it would not match up very, very well. Not to mention, so it's it goes through wireless internet connections. So that also would create more issues. But their recommendation was was not to do it, was to actually add more terminals, which is why you see more hardwired terminals in there to help create more workstations for our staff, which was the recommendation from the software company.
I would suggest to you that we ought to find somebody else then because there are several places that you can go to that operate off iPads, and I don't see terminals all over the place. And they're obviously they're wireless. So yes, there could possibly be an issue at a time limit, then you have to revert back to the old way. But to say that, well, I just think that maybe somebody else need to take a restaurant entrepreneur.
Right, yeah. So there are there are other point-of-sale options that that are out there that may alleviate some of that, and it may be a better option to do that. And I mean, I know that would be a costly endeavor to to go into a different software. It's I'm not it is possible. And and at the direction of the board, I'd be happy to look into those.
I think for some clarification, we had this discussion when we were in the process of redoing the restaurant and decided not to go in the direction of the iPads, which is why we bought the equipment that we have.
Correct.
Opposed to buying other equipment.
Didn't know about that.
Yeah, that's correct. Any other comments?
I just got one. Turnover seems to be awful high for six weeks into the season. I mean, you never see the same people behind the bar two days in a row.
And that is just an unfortunate life in the business of a restaurant. If we have had a lot of turnover, it's unfortunate. There's been turnover for different reasons. There's been people that have left for other work, people that have been terminated for cause, and people that have just decided for to move away. It's it's it is. It happens a lot. It always happens a lot in the restaurant. It's unfortunate. It's a huge challenge for us. You know, always finding new people, hiring new people, training new people. I mean, obviously, we would love to to have people for a long time and not have to go through all those processes. But it's unfortunate. And, you know, we're just going to keep trying to hire new and better people and hopefully some more long term.
Tanya, would in your report, are you going to bring up the fence? Or should I talk to Mike directly now about it?
I was just going to mention that we are working on finalizing the quotes for the fence.
Okay.
Okay.
Because that's something we we need to get going on, so.
Yeah, we do understand.
Okay.
We are working on finalizing. So I will let the board know. It'll be an email or a phone call, you know, let you know that we have secured the the fencing quotes.
Very good.
You're just going to approve it, right? We don't have to.
It's under 25,000.
It's under 25,000. The next question is the budget side.
Next question.
We don't have we don't have a budget specifically for fence. And I don't know necessarily. I have to work with Omar and looking at our budget to see what we can do. And we might have a budget amendment.
Yeah, well, if you need a budget amendment, let's start it now so we can.
We can vote on that now.
We can vote on it now if you want it because it's something we need, and we're not going to sit around. I don't want this to last six months.
I went back there. I took a visit back there, visited Mr. Armstrong on his property. Phew. You're lucky I don't live there. I'd make your lives miserable every day. It's horrible back there. Horrible.
Did you hear what Mike? You do already.
Oh, I do already? I'd be worse, Mike. I'd be doing nightmare.
I think the board I think the board would support you in any amount necessary to fix this problem.
And I just don't want to to hold stuff up an amendment because we're at least I'm going to vote for whatever we need to do to get the thing done.
I don't know that we would need a budget amendment necessarily. We might be able to handle the cost within our budget. But let's we'll take a look at the quotes and go from there.
But I would reiterate that it's the fence isn't the only solution. We need to address the hog population and and sending them out and getting rid of them as quickly as we can.
But the fence is first.
We are doing that now. We actually have our trapper. We put a put some areas where they go to. And like last night, they caught three more, good-sized ones. But the fence is absolutely needed. They're going to come over on on Dan's property and everybody's property over there. But we are catching them every every week. Week they catch them. And if you guys want me to send you a picture of them, I'll do it every time instead of me. But he's out there.
I hate to throw a monkey in the wrench, but there's more money that's going to be needed besides the fence. You got to fix the property.
Yeah.
I mean, in all fairness to these people, we got to do something about the property because I'm telling you, it's terrible.
Sure that we need to do that.
Well, all right. We'll look into that. Right.
I suggested shooting them, and we're not allowed to shoot firearms in here. I even I even suggested crossbows.
I thought they said we can we can shoot them out, but they want to supervise us.
They're catching them. They're taking them out of here. Okay? They are catching them, and they are taking them out of here. So we're getting them.
Just so my.
They came from Canada originally anyways. That's what I was told.
Just remember, I believe the first thing we heard about this was last September or October. And I can tell you, if it was the golf course, they wouldn't fix the ring.
We will get it fixed.
Is it?
And it'll make you happy, right? Is it Florida law that we can't shoot them? Sun and Lake.
If if based on my research, if you can keep if everything that happens happens on your own property, you yes, you can shoot them on your own property. But a bullet can't cross the street, can't cross your property line. So you literally have to wait for the hog to be on your own property, and then yes, you could shoot it.
There is no exceptions? I mean, we can't say that, you know, we have a that's we need to control this situation. It's out of control right now. The fastest and best method is to kill. We can't. We can't act on that?
No, I think we have a we have a policy against firearms.
Right.
So the I guess the question is, is who are we talking about shooting? If you're wanting district personnel? No, that's no, we can't do that. But if you are on your own property, if you are on your own property, you are allowed to discharge a firearm to protect your property from a wild animal.
Well, I'm talking about bringing someone in that does that outside firm.
I guess any I don't know that that I don't know that they would have that. I'd have to research that because that's that goes beyond, you know, the ability to protect your own property.
Yeah, but to the extent that we now own the bulk of Unit 12, could we hire somebody to go in and shoot the hogs on Unit 12, which is a vast population?
Yeah, arguably, I think that's that would be doable. The district owns it, so.
Can you clarify that and bring it back? Because I would love to be able to to get these taken care of in the quickest, swiftest way possible.
Exactly.
And safest way possible.
All right, supervisors, you should have there in your packet a copy of a letter I drafted to McDermott Davis. There are auditors. This goes back to the Louis Longman Walker research that was done. Basically, we're trying to put the ball in their court. The the letter from Louis Longman Walker basically says what, you know, that they disagreed with what the auditor's been doing and suggested a proper way to address it. And so we're sending a copy of that letter along with this letter, which I'm looking for, you know, board approval on to basically tell them, you know, if you're not going to do what our attorney, you know, we Louis Longman has suggested, we want to know why. And so if you had a chance to review it, if I can just get a consensus that says I've drafted it for Tanya to send out under her signature under district letterhead, but I wanted you guys to review and approve it before we did that. If we miss.
I think you have consent.
Okay, we'll move forward on that. Not much else. The I think the it looks like we've got the KW issue resolved. I sent off a the settlement documents to KW's attorney. Expect to hear back from her next week, and that should hopefully resolve that matter. Casco, I filed the reply brief of the court requested actually last night. So that's in the court hands now, and we'll see, I guess, where that goes. Hopefully, we'll get a decision sooner rather than later. That's all I've got. Unless there's questions.
Okay. General Manager's report?
Good morning, supervisors. I'd like to give an update on the World Design Marketing January report that I sent out to you. A couple of things. I'm working with Susan Delano on the visit sunnillake.com domain and what we can do to enhance the page. We noticed that, you know, a couple of board meetings ago, when we entered Sun and Lake Improvement District, we still have the SNL the main page coming up and not the brand-new landing page. So I'll be working with Susan on that. Also, we also discussed the target states that we are targeting right now. And I'm looking into possibly looking at more of Indiana, Illinois, Ohio versus New Jersey. I'd like to work with her more to see where we are with the states that we currently have. That's something else. I don't know if she is recommending midstream or what we can do there. So I think there might be some potential there. But I do want to mention the website analytics. The website pages that see the most clicks is the real estate besides the homepage. People are interested in properties inside Sun and Lake. Also, we do have a premier Realtor now at Sun and Lake Realty. So Sun and Lake Realty is on the website at visit sunnillake.com.
Actually, I spoke to Jim yesterday. He's got no hits at all. Nobody's contacted him. So people may be looking at it on the website, but nobody's contacted him.
And he just signed up last month? Two weeks ago.
I just asked him because I saw he was on the website. That's why I asked him, see if he got any.
And then at the next board meeting, I will give a full update on our projects that include shuffleboard, the turtle run restrooms, drainage, roads, and the Matanzas low station.
What is the next step with this market? I mean, I hate I know I'm on the restaurant all the time and I'm on marketing all the time, but is what is our next step with this marketing plan? If we're just going to write it out and pay him 75,000 and call it a day? Or what are we doing?
We would revisit the marketing plan during the budget process. I mean, at this.
During the budget process?
What we want to do for next year. I mean, we we did approve the the contract at the 75,000, and we will continue to work with them on statistics and and other things. But I think we we should revisit it during the budget process.
To your knowledge, has anybody contacted us at all?
No, sir.
No one?
And do you know what the basis is that they think the 2% click-through is good?
I can talk to Susan about that. So I could I'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, it's it's kind of odd that 2% is good, yet we haven't had any action whatsoever from it. Doesn't sound good. And I can I can tell you that I've started going to visit Sun and Lake when I needed to access Sun and Lake so it would get more activity, so it would get out there on.
I'm doing the same thing.
And I am now finding that I am getting a lot of screen views as I go through my searches. It's popping up a lot. So I I know they are working it, but it doesn't seem to be effective.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Unfinished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Any committee reports?
No committee reports.
Public comments? Anybody from the public?
I'll read it. Mike, what the foot effect of this 10% commander question I had on you today? And everybody reading on your blog thread, you know, just want to feel that being open.
Yeah, that's part of the especially with with the percentage of our cost of goods sold. It definitely goes against that majorly. But that is part of the reason why I spoke to our our cover average, which all a cover is is just an entree item going out, you know, what we sold it for. That average has dropped down, and it and it I would say a huge majority of of our food is sold to members. So you can directly see that drop in revenue compared with the 10%. So yes, you can directly see that 10% drop in revenue.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Dan, I'm showing six months Canadian residence. In regards to the fencing situation behind our area, when would you expect this to be started? And how long will it take to complete?
Within a couple of weeks, I hope to have it started. Couple of weeks up. And then I'll take it. And I mean, Tanya's got to find the money for me first, but and then I figure it'll take three or four days to do it.
Well, it depends on the contractor, too. If you have a contractor that's, you know, four weeks out, I I don't know that we've talked through those details yet because we I haven't seen the quotes to. talked through those details yet because we, I haven't seen the quotes to be able to determine, uh, the pricing and then the timing just yet, so I hope to have something by next week.
I think you were asking me, you said it was going to be somewhere around $15,000 to the census. Is that all the way down, running?
Yes.
In the middle of it?
Yeah, I'll be back to the ponds.
I didn't say that. I don't know that that's true, Mike.
Well, it's a mile and a quarter, that's what we.
Yeah, but I haven't seen the quotes.
Okay, well, I'll get it.
And then would it also include the cleanup of that area? Not just the fencing itself, but the area that now has been destroyed.
You mean the cleanup on the Sun and Lake property?
I'm sorry?
The Sun and Lake property, you mean?
Yeah.
I, I don't know what cleanup, Mike, I'm sorry.
Um, Dan Pocken.
The destruction has been done.
And the back end is fenced.
I mean, it's like a bomb has gone off, it's all the way down. It's a real massive, it used to be all bracked and hurt.
That we never addressed, Dan.
I don't know, I mean, I'm unbelievable, so. I want all of that, it would be clean up also, including the damage to the program.
I'm George Tomberger, President. The, uh, speed tables and speed cushions are real, and that's something that I've heard a lot, but. Uh, the speed bombs.
I have been up for a month.
Does the board going to establish a consistent policy on how you slow down, because I think most of these things have been tried and tested. Because I see speed cushions as a possible option.
As a possible?
Over a speed bomb like they have on Matanzas. And the speed on the ground is like 15, 20 miles an hour. You know, shouldn't run as your, uh, we don't, so there's speaking about Matanzas.
Uh, it's 20, but it's 10 right by the speed cushions.
But that's not bad. You go over a speed of 15 miles an hour, that's different than.
We have signs in front of both of them that says 10 mile an hour.
But my point is on boulders, I think there's four major boulders, I'm just, I'm not counting the ones that, uh, not boulder. But the boulder very many access. I think you need a consistent policy because I see speed cushions as bad news. Those things don't take up a whole road, they, if you go over the sea. And you, I think you can see, you see all the riders trying to avoid this thing and going to the left or to the right. And you've got to make sure that those things are higher than the speed, like on Matanzas. I think Matanzas is good. There's no sidewalks or outguttering, a lot of this kind of speed, very quick, I don't want to take them out, it's expensive. I think boulders are going to be speed tighter. Uh, interiors like Matanzas on the ABC Street, some of them should be boulders on the right of the right, but not speed, but the fact of speed is not better than those factors. They're tough. I was driven over all at different speeds, so I don't know what I'm talking about.
The, the process was to look at alternatives and come up with a conclusion as to how we should best control, and it might be different things in different areas.
With, with, President, uh, we had this program, I've heard of the program, something about, if you buy a property in Sun and Lake, you then get a free membership to the club for a year, is that correct?
That was an old policy, that's gone.
No longer, that's no longer. Okay. Good. Uh, little February, if you wait until the budget process before you readdress the marketing program, it may be too late to do anything subsequent for 2021. Your budget process is until June, July, August.
Starts in May.
Pardon?
Starts in May.
Starts in May. By May, it's too late really to do anything about 2021. If you want to readdress the marketing program, we don't have any time to wait. Uh, I explained a couple of times over the last 20 years that we're putting a marketing plan together. Uh, the four important concepts to think about, it's all the four P's. The product, the place, the intention, they talked about the issue of distribution, selling and marketing, and the prices of the product and promotion. I've also mentioned before, we have a great product and we have a compelling price. What we don't have is somebody on our staff that knows how to sell, uh, programs. And we don't have anybody on the staff that themselves understands how to put a marketing plan together. We need that individual. Uh, we have a great place, it couldn't be difficult to sell this place. What we lack is the will to make it happen. And that will really set a focus on, I mean, if you've got a person who understands sales and marketing and be willing to pay a person what they are worth to make that happen. We wouldn't build a sewer treatment plan and then not pay what it takes to hire a person to run a sewer treatment plan or a water treatment plan. I, I, anybody explain why we don't understand that we have to have a person that is skilled and craft in the art of sales and marketing in order to really, uh, make something happen. 300 people moving to Florida every day. Let's say 10% of those are dogs. That's 30 people, that's 200 people a week moving to Florida every day. Doesn't it seem feasible to attract some of those people here? Have somebody that knows how to handle the weather here, exposes them to a slice of light, gets them to involve in some of the things that go on here so that they understand what a great place we have here, what a wonderful place it is for them. I'm sorry, I've been at this now for about 20 years. I used to think I was a pretty damn good salesman, but I sure haven't been able to sell a concept here. We have to sell to somebody on staff that knows that that's their business.
Any other public comment?
I wish we could explain.
Happy to talk to you offline. Happy to talk to you after the meeting.
Uh, Gail, wait. From the heart of Florida, it's really wild and hot, we have a big problem. We had the same problem about 15, it could be a year or two, a year, 13 years ago, I lost a big few years ago, about 15 years ago, we had the same problem. Wow. Right away, the people that were at the property at that time, what is what a called yard, came in and trapped and trapping fast and really eliminated our problem. But this has been going on over there now and I, I haven't got the exact number of days that it's been.
Months.
I've watched. And I don't know whether, uh, you all, any of the board members really seen the damage to it. If you have, um, it's not true, but I, I complained as soon as this happened. And I told there would be traps. And I'm an ad-hire, I have to trade, it's not only on that property, but all over the earth. And I haven't been able to see the traps. And years ago, when these traps were around, you know, it was very obvious, if you walked around, you could see the tracks. But if there's any tracks in there now, I would like for someone to show me where the rest.
I'll take you out there, Gail, anytime you want to go.
I'm ready to go.
Okay. All right. And I'm ready to take you.
It's been tremendous from now. It's only going to get worse, so they're still coming in there, even though they've rooted it all up now, they're still coming in. I know back, uh, behind the bow, I worked at the factory back, I've got everything set up. And yesterday, uh, I was back there and I spotted there's a lot of loud halls back in there. I spotted four, two, okay? Which I didn't see many of back there, but we've got a real problem over there and we would appreciate, uh, some help and.
I agree.
Well, Gail, I'm just glad that we, uh, acquired that property so we can do something about it, because if, if we wouldn't acquired that property, we'd all have been in trouble. But now you're coming to the right place.
Okay. Seeing no other public comment, I'll bring it back to the board for any board-to-board comment. Anyone?
Yeah, let's just, next meeting, I'd like to discuss, get this Florida hospital issue put to bed.
Awesome. Okay.
Talk about that.
Get out of there. You got to do something. Okay. Um, one of the other, or actually, two of the other things that are related, um, that I, that struck me as I was going through the policy manual again, um, had to do with our five-year plan, which is really more of a wish list, but if you read it, I think we need to be more serious about how that five-year plan comes together. And I think in order to do that, we need to look at a larger master plan as to what, what our anticipation as to the final build-out of, of Sun and Lake is going to be, even if it is 100 years from now, what, what, what do we expect it to be? And start stressing a five-year plan that addresses that. And in particular, some of the, the issues that I think need to, to be pieced into that five-year plan, whether they're bond or otherwise, is if we do some development in Unit 12 with a, with a new property owner, which we are hopefully going to get, we haven't got one yet, uh, but if that starts being developed, then we've got to look at the impacts to our sewer. There's been discussions as to what to do about the, the sewer system that's near capacity and the sewer system that has lots of room and whether we bring that together, whether we build a new system, whether we move the hospital over. There's been lots of discussions, but I think we need to build them into more specific plans, uh, which means that we need to, to really work at getting a, a clearer master plan as to where we're going as a district, uh, and putting together firmer plans on what the five-year plan should look like. And I think we need some, some guidance from staff on that, but certainly the board needs to be looking at what the impacts are and, and where we want to take it, because it's, it's really our decision, they're the implementers. I agree. Okay. Um, okay, nothing else? Meeting's adjourned.
Hey, Chrissy, nice touch, nice touch.
Very sweet.